Roll call, please.
Mr. Person?
Here.
Ms. Palmer?
Here.
Mr. Corman?
Here.
Mr. Taylor?
Here.
Mr. Pavoni?
Here.
Ms. Brier?
Here.
Mr. Prince?
Here.
Roll call, all present.
Thank you, and the first thing we have this evening is a special presentation from the Reach Center of Hope on its first anniversary celebration. And is that Karen, you're the lead on that?
I am. I'm Karen Briggswick, the Human Services Manager for the City of Renton, and thank you for having this special presentation. I'm here to introduce Reverend Linda Smith, the Executive Director of the Renton Ecumenical Association of Churches Center of Hope. We're celebrating their first year anniversary today, and earlier we had a celebration downstairs. And Linda would like to go over some high points of the last year with you. So Reverend Linda Smith is going to speak for a couple minutes.
Well, thank you, and good afternoon to you all. It is certainly an honor and a pleasure to be here tonight to just give you some highlights from a great celebration that we just celebrated, one year with the Reach Center of Hope. And in that year, what we've tried to do is to provide a place of refuge for homeless women and homeless women with children. And we believe that through the support of city officials, our community, and various supporters, that we've been very successful at that. As you may know, the center was established in 2013 in response to a growing need for, to help women and women with children, especially here in the Renton community. Many women found themselves not having a community and having to go to like a downtown Seattle area, which was not friendly to many of them. And so what they need, what they needed were things that we've been able to provide, and that's things like food, showers, laundry, and most of all importantly is overnight housing. As you're aware, we've partnered with faith community to find overnight housing for our women, especially women with children. And in that effort, we've been very successful in terms of helping women navigate other housing resources to connect to more long-term housing. Our mission is to provide a safe and secure and healthy community of healing, fostering human dignity, respect, and personal stability, and to advocate ending homelessness for women and women with children. And our goal has been to reconnect people to the gift of life through the resources that we provide. Just to give you just a quick overview of what we provide, we provide two meals a day and snack, community health nurse, case management through Catholic Community Service, ongoing access to clothing, hygiene, shower, and laundry, personal hope bags, which include toothpaste, toothbrush, and other personal items, mail, and phone and computer services, resource connection to vital housing, which if a person is homeless, they could call 211, and normally they are on a waiting list for two years. What we do is we help people connect to temporary long-term housing until more stable housing is found. We provide monthly birthday parties for our kids through Birthday Dreams, through the Renton Library, we have a wonderful library where we promote literacy, we have locker services that we provide, we provide bus service to our families, resume preparation, group support, and most of all overnight service. So just to give you an idea of some of the things that have happened in the past year, and this is simply not inclusive of everything that we've done, but we have conducted over 135 intakes, we've served over 905 residents, we've served over 2,112 meals, 549 showers, 566 loads of laundry, 789 bus tickets for transportation, and provided over 1,553 bed nights, including assisting 13 families in moving from homelessness to more stable long-term housing. Many of our residents have recently become employed and are able to move into housing that can accommodate their income. So also, we believe that we've accomplished a lot, and we've had just tremendous support of the community. We believe that there is much work to be done. As you are aware, the last overnight count, there was 90 families in the City of Renton that were in unsheltered. Our goal is to reach out to all Renton area families, and we've been successful at that through the school liaison program. They've been amazing in terms of connecting families to us. We are continuing to press forward to eradicate the ills of homelessness in our community, and we believe that we're making a difference, and we believe that we will continue to make a difference. We appreciate the council's support and appreciate our city's support, just amazing support from all of you, and that is affirmed day after day as I run into you. Some of our families tonight just wanted to send a thank you to Mayor Law, and then also thank you to you, our city council, for supporting us in this endeavor. So thank you very much for all that you have been to us, and thank you for continuing to support us.
I know that on your website, you have a list of things that you always need, and one thing that you and all the other volunteers, whenever I ask, always they mention, well, of course, the bus tickets, but rolling suitcases.
Yes, rolling luggage.
Because that's how a lot of them keep their things.
Their personal items with them, yes, and they do a lot of, you know, traveling. It sort of becomes their home on wheels, really, and so we tend to go through a lot of that. So that is a real critical item for us.
Good.
Great, Marcy.
Anything else that stands out? I just remember that one.
Well, I think the rolling luggage, the bus transportation is really critical now that we're coming, you know, to the end of the donated ones through the license tab, so that's even more critical. Some of our families don't get anything. They just simply get a few food stamps, they get no money. So we have to provide for that. So those are perhaps the two most important things that we need at this point.
Thank you.
Reverend Smith?
Nice job.
Could you, for the benefit of people that are watching at home, let them know how they can get any contributions or donations to your organization?
Okay, thank you. Well, they can reach us through the www.reechrenton.org website, and on there we have a listing of ways that people can help, ways that they can volunteer, and how they can donate.
Can contributions be brought directly here to City Hall?
Contribution can be brought directly here to City Hall, Monday through Friday, 8 to 5 p.m. Thank you, yeah. And I just want to make sure that those of you who weren't at the celebration, we're going to leave some of our thank you book tags back here, and we'd like for you to have one. Thank you.
Linda, I was present at the ceremony today, and I just want to say what an eye-opening it was to see the number of volunteers and the way that you recognized all the volunteers. And the, for those in the public that don't know it, is they run it out of our old jail downstairs. They've done a fantastic job in fixing it up. There's a, the city's partnered with them for a dollar a year lease, and they have to provide everything other than that. And it just, it was rewarding to hear the people talk and say how much they've been helped. And I guess, I don't think there's anybody in the viewing audience, I don't think there's anybody in this, up here, that doesn't have an old rolling suitcase that we wondered what to do, because it doesn't seem like anybody else wants them. So I hope you, I hope you get swamped. Because I know, one thing about this group, if they get an oversupply of something, they're tied in with all the churches. It's a real partnership, and all that stuff gets used. It doesn't, nothing goes to waste. And I guess, one of the telling things that you brought up that we who have homes don't think of is how important it is to have a place to have your mail delivered.
Yes.
That is, that is phenomenal, and then to be able to use a phone. We take, everybody takes for granted that we got our cell phones and that. So I've had occasion to be down there more than, more than once and see the people, you're doing a fantastic job. And I just want to say thank you, and to that whole host of volunteers that are the heart and soul of it, thank you very much.
Thank you, Council President, and we certainly received that blessing for the luggage, and certainly we have an amazing group of volunteers, so thank you.
I'm going to bring you some, I've been wondering what to do with it.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'll just take a minute, because Linda won't do it, because she's so modest. But I think the other thing we heard at today's presentation was, while she was great about praising the number of volunteers, and it is true what makes this system unique in this city is the way in which this community embraces this issue and has come together. It is, however, largely because of Linda's tenacity and her enthusiasm and her spirit, as well as Maggie Smith. And I mean, Linda also embraces the concept of volunteerism. A lot of ours, non-compensated by this great woman, to ensure that other people's lives are blessed. And I just, as, you couldn't have been prouder, I don't think. Sitting down there and listening to the way the community's come together and the way Linda has been able to orchestrate the Center of Hope to really be a focal point for all of that giving is just a great, great portrait of the potential of this community to really step up and bless the lives of each of us individually as residents of the city. So Linda, to that, thanks so much.
You're here.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
And next on the agenda is an update on the Cedar River Library, and that's Peter Renner.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem Person and council members. I am, for the record, Peter Renner, the City Facilities Director. Last week, Greg Smith, the Facilities Director for KCLS, was here to give you an informational update on the results of the bidding process, and spoke about the features of the Renton Library over the Cedar River, as well as the dates for the closing of the library and the opening of a temporary library site. However, because the topic was not listed on the agenda, the administration scheduled the presentation on tonight's agenda to provide another opportunity for the public to receive it. I used Greg's notes as the basis for a part of tonight's update, but there is some supplemental information I would like to share, and there has been some additional progress since last Monday. I would also like to touch on the topic of the peripheral issues that city staff is working on. The new library is a large project, and there will certainly be some disruption to the normal flow of activity in Liberty Park. We are working as a team to mitigate the impacts. In a few minutes, you will hear from Fred Gurney, the Renton Library Cluster Interim Manager, about the extensive outreach programs that KCLS has planned for the duration, with emphasis on this summer's programming. Construction bids were opened on May 20th, 2014. There were a total of six bidders. The low base bid came in at 5.1 million, and the high bid was 5.9 million. The engineer's estimate was 6.2, so we are well within budget for the project even with bid alternatives. The four low bids were within a $500,000 spread. The contract with the successful bidder, Construction Enterprise and Contractors of Tacoma, has been signed by the contractor and will be signed by KCLS shortly. Notice to proceed will be issued on June 30th. The contract duration will be 365 days, so substantial completion is expected June 30th, 2015. Final completion will be 45 days later, AKA August 14th, 2015. And although it's pretty early in the process, the target date for opening the library is in September of 2015. The last day of operation for the library as it is now will be June 22nd, and the temp site will open on June 25th. That temporary site is located at 64 Rainier Avenue South in about 2,000 square feet of space. The temp site will have some computers, a small collection, and holds pickup. The hours for that library will be 11:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., Monday through Thursday, 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. on Friday, 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. on Saturday, and 1:00 to 5:00 p.m. on Sunday. Library staff has posted signage and given away bookmarks with closing information over the last couple of weeks. KCLS is advertising in the local paper about the closure this week, and it was front-page news last week. There, there are also signs posted in the library, and there's information about the schedule on the KCLS website. And I'd just like to take a minute to talk about the design features of the library. Recall that the library was originally built in 1965 and '66 and remodeled in 1986. The library will have floor-to-ceiling glazed curtain wall that will let in more natural light and create more views to the river. Let me just, up here. This, by the way, is from an FAQ that we posted at the city's website under the library. This is the view from the west side, and you can see there the full-height windows all the way from the deck up, and the flatter nature of the roof. And then the previous photo, or previous drawing, was from the southeast to the entry. This is the pedestrian bridge here, and this is the section, the wedge section, where now you can look over the railing and you can see the riverbank. Part of the project is to fill that in, and then the entry is here. And then these diagonal members are part of the steel brace frames that are contributing to the seismic upgrade that I'll mention briefly shortly. There's a new metal canopy at the entire perimeter of the building that will provide solar protection. There will be an exposed roof structure on the inside of the library so that the volume of the main collection area will feel much more generous. The new high-performance wall and roof assemblies will improve energy efficiency and thermal comfort. The large, there's, let me just flip to another slide here. This is the floor plan for the library. The yellow section at the bottom is the pedestrian bridge with the filled-in wedge section. Down in the lower right-hand corner is the meeting room with glass doors that can be pulled back to open the library, to open the meeting room to the rest of the library so that during the day, or at times when the light, when this particular room isn't being used for meetings, it can be opened up and patrons can use it for other tasks. These three rooms here are study rooms for patron use. There is a great deal more electrical service in the library, or there will be, to support more computer stations and study tables with integrated power. Here's the computer stations, and here are some of the tables with integrated power. Site improvements will include the new entry plaza on the southeast side, and the architect, the landscape architect for the project has been working closely with city staff so that the integration with the pathways that there are in Liberty Park, re-establishment of the artwork, and tree forms can be done in a coherent and collaborative way. There will also be a new trash recycling enclosure over here. The seismic upgrade consists of new agri-cast piles that have a concrete cap that is 20 feet wide, 120 feet long, and two feet thick. There will be 49 24-inch diameter agri-cast piles on each side of the library. I mentioned the steel brace frames, and they will be around the entire section of the building and provide an upgrade that will allow the library to meet current seismic codes. The electrical conservation features include LED and high-efficiency fluorescent lighting. Those are the most efficient forms that can be had today. The target is 10% or better below energy code for lighting. There will also be daylight dimming controls. The building will use an efficient natural gas condensing boiler for heating. The ductwork and piping will be sized to reduce pumping and fan energy and keep noise at a low level. Cooling equipment will be specified with efficiencies exceeding the code. That is, in combination with the existing building having a poor thermal rating, so the new fenestrations for the building and the new equipment will help the building exceed current Washington State Energy Code requirements. The library is an extensive construction project, so let me pull up a map, a zone map of what that represents. You recognize this as the parking lot for the library, and the fencing will contain the entire area. They need a lot of room for staging and bringing equipment in. And then at times during construction, the other bank of the river will also have some enclosed fencing for staging, and mostly for equipment, though. And that will be coming in off of Bronson Way North, through the parking lot, down this side, and then they can turn in here and do their drilling and demo work and so on. And although it is early in the project, we have already collaborated with the contractor and the KCLS project staff to provide something close to normal access during Renton River Days. So this section will be, there's gates here, and those will be opened up. There will be an additional fence section brought in here to keep the area safe. People can walk across the construction, or walk across the pedestrian walkway. This fence will be moved to the other side of the walkway, and then access to the 200-mile parking lot is here. So that'll just be a clear shot, as it is now, up to Liberty Park. We've also ensured a continuation of parking for the tenants in the Liberty Park Community Building and for the users of the park. Parking will not be interfered with many times at all.
Mr. Chair? Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Peter, I see you've got an arrow here that talks, speaks to temporary trail access around construction site. After Renton River Days, what is the detour going to look like to the many people that use the trail?
They will, I can't speak to the exact placement of that trail, but it's my understanding is that they will bring in bark mulch, and it'll be pretty clear where the, where the, where the trail's going. And thank you for bringing that up, because right at the point of this arrow is roughly the location for the ADA access to the trail. And except for extremely, well, except for very dangerous days when construction is going on, that, that access point will be maintained throughout. The other areas we're coordinating internally are tree protection during construction, the project's schedule and neighbor notification of special activities, signage and surveillance, safety and security, avoiding utility damage, keeping the Cedar River Trail continuous, including the ADA accessibility, preserving memorials and artwork, and mitigating the impacts of the project on the homeless.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Sorry for interrupting you, Peter, but as you were speaking, Kelly Beamer came up behind you, and I'm assuming she had some information?
The trail?
On the trail. Councilwoman Taylor Kelly Beamer, Parks and Golf Course Director. Just really quickly, you had mentioned what's going to be the trail access and/or detour after Renton River Days, and/or before, for that matter. As Peter mentioned, there will be continued ADA access minus a few times that the contractor needs to get in to do some of the borings, and that is for safety reasons. But the sidewalk, there's a sidewalk that goes out to Bronson, back around the Liberty Park building, and then back into Liberty Park. That will be the permanent detour route until such time that the area opens up for safety.
Great, thank you.
We're also concerned with preserving special events like movies in the park, the planned trail walk, shelter rentals, day softball, and making sure that KCLS's outside programs continue and even increase during this time. As you can see, there has been a lot of thought given to anticipating potential problems, and already the coordination between departments and divisions has been extensive. We have no doubt that KCLS, their architect and their contractor will be outstanding partners in the effort, because we all have the same end goal of providing a beautiful library that will serve the citizens for many years to come. Fred?
Good evening. My name is Fred Gurney. I'm the Interim Cluster Manager for the Fairwood, Renton Highlands, and Renton Libraries. Prior to assuming that role on May 27th, I was the Managing Librarian of the Renton Library since September of 2011. So I've been here about two and a half years. And it's my privilege to have been invited to speak tonight about outreach activities that will be going on in the Renton Library service area during the closure. As Greg and Peter have indicated to you, Renton Library will close for remodel at 5:00 p.m. on next Sunday, June 22nd. And the Renton Temporary Library, also known as Renton Temp, will be open at 11:00 a.m. on Wednesday, June 25th. Renton Library will be closed for at least a year, and this does overlap with the closure, as you know, of the Fairwood Library, which is tentatively scheduled to reopen late this year. Despite the fact that two of our three full-service libraries will be simultaneously closed for remodel for several months, we are determined to maintain our commitment to providing service, library service, and library-sponsored outreach activities in the Renton Library service area. And I'd like to give you a representative sampling of some of the cool things that are going to be going on over the next three months and beyond with respect to outreach in the Renton Library service area. You have some handouts in your packets, and you needn't refer to them if you like, I'm just going to refer to them. This is our Teen Summer Learning 2014, and this is our Fizz Boom Read, which is children's summer learning, right here. And then I also brought a June calendar of programs for Renton Highlands and Renton Libraries. And so just to give you an idea of some of the things we're going to be offering and how we intend to offer them, on June 23rd, which is the day after Renton Library closes, we're going to be offering a program called Gravity Catastrophe, and that is Alex Zerbi, the professional zanyac, teaches basic concepts of physics through the art of juggling. That is going to be happening at the Renton Community Center, and that is a KCLS-sponsored program. Two, three weeks later, on July 14th, we have something called the Fraggle Rock Crew Show, and that also is going to be held at the Renton Community Center, and that is all about hip-hop culture and breakdancing. And that's from the teen, that's geared for teens, it's from the Teen Summer Learning Program. In the Summer Learning Program, the Fizz Boom Read, and these are geared for smaller children, we've got a variety of things. On July 2nd, we have a musical play called The Day Zero Left Dodge. That's taking place at Heritage Park. On July 16th, we have an event called Sing a Song of Science, and that is taking place at Liberty Park. And on July 30th, we have something called Planet of the Amps, and that is taking place at Tiffany Park. On August 5th, we have our yearly King County Library System Day, which takes place at the Henry Moses Aquatic Center. And on August 8th, we have a science magic show, also at Liberty Park. And the theme I want to point out here is these are all library-sponsored programs. They are organized by librarians in our cluster of libraries. And what we're doing is we are partnering with the city and with local entities so we can bring these programs partnering with the city and with local entities so we can bring these programs out into our service area. We take the library beyond its walls.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah?
Yes.
My granddaughter actually brought home a lot of this from school today, and one of my questions was, how long are most of these? You have a starting time, but not an ending time, like an hour or so?
Well, that is kind of, sometime, you know, typically, children's programs will last 45 minutes.
Okay.
If it's a concert, it might be longer. It could be an hour, an hour and a half. It really, it really depends on the kind of program we're offering.
Okay.
Attention spans being what they are when you're six years old, we try to keep them short and sweet.
Exactly. Good, thank you.
You bet. We have other things going on, and I'm gonna try to keep this brief. Our Big Red Library To Go van. We are gonna be at the Farmer's Market two weeks out of four. We were there for the first time on June 3rd, the first day, and we had 226 visitors. At, just at the Library To Go van, it was fantastic. We expect that we're going to continue to have a lot of business through the Library To Go van. The Library To Go van will also, we have it, again, two weeks out of four, we're gonna continue our Library To Go runs during the closure. And we go to places like Royal Hills, Renton Youth Advocacy, Rainbow Home Childcare, Meet Tesoro, Hillcrest Terrace, a variety of facilities, many of them geared for childcare. And that is, again, about bringing library service out into the community. And finally, though we do not have the library to our regular van the weekend of Renton River Days, I personally arranged to have our spare van that day so that we can participate in the Renton River Days Parade. So we will be there, just like we were last year and the year before. We're also putting on a concert at Liberty Park the next day, and it is something called the Eric Oud Program, and that was put together by our Dynamite Children's Librarian, Becca Martin.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Fred, has there been an increase in the availability of the library van in the Sunset Area?
I, I do not know, but I can talk to our Library To Go coordinator.
During the summer?
Yeah, and I would be very happy to get back to you with that information.
Appreciate that.
For sure. You bet. Any other questions?
Any other questions? Or continue?
Yes, please. Continue?
Yeah.
Okay. So, just a couple final thoughts. We have a program called Let's Read, and Let's Read is a program where our children's librarian go to areas where they have free lunches. We inaugurated this a couple years ago, and we are currently scheduling those programs as well. And this year, we have something called Deep Dive, and I'm not sure if you were aware of that, you probably are. But that's a partnership between Renton Public Schools and the King County Library System to provide programs during the summer for a six-to-eight week period. So, Renton Library, it may be closing, Fairwood Library, it may be closing, but we're working hard to continue to have, maintain a presence in the community, the community that we all love. Thank you very much. Do you have any other questions?
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Okay, with that, administrative report, Mr.?
Just one item, Mr. Mayor. The, we're beginning the summer picnic season, so we'll start with the South Rent Neighbors' Association. They'll have their picnic this Wednesday, June 18th, at 5:30 at Burnett Linear Park, located at 502 Burnett Avenue South. The Evondale Homeowners' Association will hold their picnic Thursday, the 19th, at 5:30 at their neighborhood park, located at Southeast 4th and Zilla Place, Southeast. Residents of each neighborhood are encouraged to bring their favorite potluck dish, attend their picnic, and get to know their immediate surrounding neighbors, and meet city representatives. All, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you very much. Next is audience comment. We have two people signed up to speak to the council, and just for, if you haven't been here before, there's a timer located on the counter there, and you have five minutes to speak. It goes from green to amber, you have about 30 seconds left, and then when it goes red, that's the end of your comment. First person to talk is Tom Carpenter.
Thank you. My name is Tom Carpenter. I was here a month ago talking about 154th, 156th. I'm here to follow up on that a little bit, a little bit. So, you have in your packet a full transcription of what I'm going to say, and I'm gonna skip over some of this to stay within the five-minute period, but you've got the whole enchilada. And there's a couple maps, which I'll talk about in just a second. I'll start by thanking you for the decisions you made when I was here last and the resultant activity. Jay has engaged Greg Zimmerman, and by the way, I had a chance, he and I have emailed a number of times over the years, I have the first chance to meet him tonight, and Chip. And although I wasn't able to make it, transportation provided a briefing to your Transportation Airport Committee last week. I'm anxiously anticipating getting it shared with the community. Along with the organizational assignment you decided on last time, you also placed importance on requests you made to King County for joint planning. I didn't realize you'd made those requests, however, it was very exciting to hear. This moment is a possible opportunity to get some real work done that is focused on improving joint planning. Jurisdictional seams are a big deal when it comes to things that just don't care about governmental boundaries. Transportation is one of them, and community is another. My understanding is that the city may have ironically received a response from the county shortly after my last visit here. I haven't seen it, but I understand it included a strong resource availability caveat. This shouldn't be surprising. King County Roads has been bunkered in since the 2012 biannual budget because of cost-revenue issues. Their decisions have gotten to a point where, and by the way, I'm not being critical of this, this is a statement of reality, their decisions have gotten to a point where only a small fraction of the county road network is prioritized high enough to expect any maintenance, let alone investment. In our experience in the community, as roads' responsiveness has considerably declined, we don't expect this to improve unless funding actions are taken and/or there are breakthroughs in regional asset management. I also want to remind you that over a decade ago, King County made the conscious decision not to provide sub-area and community planning, and as a result, surplus the dozen or so existing planner positions at that time. My message is simply to ask that you keep joint planning with the county as an important objective, but not put it in the critical path of time-sensitive permitting and transportation decisions on the corridor. Just for your information, the hearing examiner meeting on, on the recent developments is gonna be next week, so that's the detail we're talking about. I did send a full copy of the package I gave you last week to Rod Dombowski, who's the Chairman of the King County Transportation, Economy, and Environmental Committee Treaty. Rod used to own property on the Plateau, so it's, he's very familiar with this area. He and I have exchanged emails in the past, starting right after he got elected to the council. It's a pleasant coincidence that he's assigned to the Tree Committee. A couple months ago, the Tree Committee got briefing on roads' proposed changes to the county's transportation currency program. We provided written comment to the whole committee regarding roads' proposals, and I followed with Rod via email to make sure he knew why we were interested. And with no disrespect, I would be surprised if joint planning for the Plateau would be on Reagan's radar. Some of us in the community are quite involved in transportation topic. I'm gonna skip over the details on that to try to save some time here tonight. Suffice it to say that we're heavily involved in transportation committee, all the way up to the PSRC. The last thing I'm going to do is talk about the role of the community in all this. It turns out, we may have some unique opportunities because of two 501(c) corporations that overlap in synergy and service areas on the Plateau. You each have received a couple maps. The smaller-scale map shows the boundaries of these two organizations. The larger-scale map zooms into the CARE boundaries on the Plateau. Fort Creaks Unincorporated Area Council originated in 1996 and transitioned in 2012, 2013 to becoming a, from a public agency to a 501(c)(3). The Community Alliance To Reach And Engage CARE originated in 2001, incorporating receiving 501(c)(4) status in 2003. Fort Creaks was originally part of King County Citizen Participation Initiative created in 1994 in response to the Growth Management Act. To this day, the mission of Fort Creaks is participation, including meaningful participation by residents and decisions that affect the future of their communities. Fort Creaks, whose boundaries are concurrent with the King County Fort Creaks Tiger Mountain Community Service Area, serves 50 square miles of unincorporated King County. The entire Renton PA on the Plateau is 5% of that land area, and includes 8,500 residents, about 39% of the total population, served by Fort Creaks. CARE and its environmental stewardship, or Project SWAN, provide a broad suite of social welfare-focused services that help bring the community meaningfully into the decision process. For example, CARE has been a party of record, and in many cases, an intervenor in land use decisions, both in King County and in Renton. CARE, Fort Creaks, and King County's Department of Natural Resources and Parks have been operating a stewardship project under a formal member of understanding since 2004. The understanding includes stewardship of a tributary base in a public park and a mile of arterial roadway on the Plateau. Instead of tasking transportation, or CED for that matter, with engaging the community, we can easily bring the departments to the community by hosting 154th, 156th arterial topics at one or both of the Fort Creaks and CARE monthly meetings. We look forward to community, or for the community to be involved in this topic. I did talk to Greg, and he, this idea of bringing the departments to the community and saving the problem of having to go figure out who in the community would be the right people to talk to is something that's highly welcome. With that, any questions or comments? My, my.
Any questions from the council?
Thanks. Thank you for coming.
Thank you. Next on the list is Audrey Adams.
My name's Audrey Adams, Renton resident. Face it, you've missed me. Maybe some, less than others. Anyway, it's been a long time since I've come and talked to you about fluoride. I still have the same problem with drugging all of the residents of your fair, of this fair city, in addition to all of those who work here and recreate here, regardless of whether or not they want to or not. But I have a solution. I actually have a win-win suggestion, which I'll tell you later. If I don't run out of time, I'll have to come back later if I run out of time. First, I want to give you analogy, and I've been thinking about this for a long time, because I don't want to bore you to death, and, but on the other hand, it's not something that we can continue to ignore. The Lancet, you know, the most prestigious medical journal in the world? The Lancet, in March, published a study that puts fluoride in the same category of being a neurotoxicant, developmental neurotoxicant, as lead, arsenic, and mercury. It's the Lancet. I didn't say that. They published it, okay? So you can believe it or not. But nonetheless, if it's a developmental neurotoxicant, according to the Lancet, we do have to kind of pay a little bit of attention. I still, I do have a solution. But first, I want to give you analogy of what it's, what are we doing when, when a water district is put in the position, or a city is put in the position of making a blanket decision for everybody? And I know you inherited this problem. You want the best for, every single one of you want the best for every single citizen of Renton. I get that, that's, we're not on different pages there. We disagree about how to do that, and I also recognize that you are under a lot of pressure from various entities, that you've got to do the right thing. You've got to get fluoride for all the poor children's teeth. I have a solution for you. But first, let me give you analogy. Let's say tomorrow, because it's such a stressful job, tomorrow, every single one of you happen to go to your doctor, your own personal doctor, not the same doctor, and after a thorough checkup and blood tests and everything, the doctor says, "You have high blood pressure. I'm gonna write a prescription for Warfarin for you." I hope that's the one that is. Anyway, "I'm gonna write a prescription for Warfarin." So, every single one of seven different doctors, and they say, "I'm gonna write a prescription for Warfarin." Well, three of you say, "Okay, well, I don't want to, but I will." And another one of you says, "You know, I'm gonna exercise." And another one says, "You know, I'm gonna start meditating, 'cause I hear that brings down blood pressure." And another's gonna say, "You know, I've heard there's some Bachelors' Spillments out there that might help me." And then, one of you says, "Hey, I'll quit the council, maybe I won't have such a stressful life." There are options. You all have options. Maybe one of you quit smoking. I don't think any of you do smoke, but if you did. These are all options that you have. And then, one of those three of you that happen to say, "Okay, I'll take that drug," you wake up the next morning after taking it, and you find you, bam, you're on the floor. Why? Because your blood pressure went too low. Why? Because that was too much for you. Every person reacts differently to this exact same drug, right? And then, one of you, a year down the road, well, you've changed your lifestyle, or whatever, you were taking it, and now your blood pressure is consistently low and you don't need it. Or, and, and the third one that actually went on Warfarin, you wound up needing half the dose. Anyway, the point is, is that every single one of you are different, and every single one of Renton residents are different, and every single person who works here and recreates here is different. And let's say, one of you who took the drug actually found out you were allergic to it, and you can't take it. Every single person is different, but the key here is that every single one of you had a choice. You could make a choice. It's a freedom of choice that you could take that drug. Every single one of your doctors say you need it, 'cause you do have high blood pressure, theoretically, but you had a choice of how you were going to rectify that particular situation. And that's what this country is about, and we fought wars over it, and we've lost many, many lives over it, and I'm out of time, but freedom of choice. You all had freedom of choice in this hypothetical situation. I'm gonna give you a solution next week. Thank you.
Thank you, Audrey.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Audrey, I did miss you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next is consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, we've got?
Open for public comment?
You can get us on the second public comment. You didn't sign up.
So, we have, you haven't said how many items have any consent agenda. You haven't asked me to, you haven't said how many have any consent agenda for me to move them.
You want to take care of the consent agenda?
Sure. So, we've got, God.
Eight.
Eight, well, my iPad just froze on me. Eight items on the consent agenda. If anyone wants anything pulled, if not, I move that we adopt the, the consent agenda as read.
Okay. Moving the second of the consent agenda to be adopted as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the next is unfinished business, and usually there's a cheat sheet here for what order I'm supposed to go in.
Just go this way.
But since I don't have it, I'm just gonna start with Marcy, with old business.
That's the way Bonnie went for your roll call. Okay, I have a Transportation Aviation Committee report. Two.
Transportation Aviation Committee report. 156th Avenue Southeast Corridor Referral. At the June 12th, 2014 Transportation Aviation Committee meeting, the May 19th, 2014 Communication from Tom Carpenter was reviewed. Public Works Department staff shared with the committee corridor information, a summary of relevant information about the corridor, and near-term next steps being undertaken by staff. When this additional information is available, the subject will be scheduled for an update by the Transportation Aviation Committee. This is signed by the committee chair and vice chair.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I move that council concur with the committee report.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to concur with the Transportation Aviation Committee report. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passed unanimously.
Transportation Aviation Committee report. Northeast 31st Street Culvert Repair Project, Replacement Alternative Bridge. The Transportation Aviation Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to accept the lowest responsive bid from Quigg Brothers Incorporated in the amount of $652,953, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign the construction contract for the Northeast 31st Street Culvert Replacement Project Replacement Alternative Bridge. The budget adjustment associated with this project will be included in the upcoming second quarter budget adjustment. This is signed by the committee chair and vice chair.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Luckily, the majority of this is a FEMA grant, so I think 80% and of this comes from them, which I'm always glad to see. And with that, I move that council concur with the Transportation Committee report.
Second.
All those in favor of the Transportation Committee report?
Aye.
All ayes? Motion passed.
And that's all.
Mr. Corman?
No, old business, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Taylor?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Pavoni?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the Utility Committee has one report to be read.
Utilities Committee report. Revisions to Renton Municipal Code Under Late-Crummers Agreements. The Utilities Committee-
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the Utility Committee has one report to be read.
Utilities Committee report. Revisions to Renton Municipal Code Under Latecomers Agreements. The Utilities Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to amend code, City Code, Title IX, Chapter Five, Latecomer Agreements, to change code to conform with the Revised Code of Washington as required by legislative changes in ESHB 1717. The committee further recommends that the ordinance regarding this matter be presented for first reading, as signed by the committee chair and vice chair.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Pavoni?
I move that the council concur with the Utility Committee report.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second, and the concur in the Utilities Committee report. All in favor?
Aye.
The only ones that know is it's unanimous, and that's passed. Mr., oh, Ms. Breyer, I'm sorry.
I have no unfinished business.
Mr. Prince?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Then we're on to resolutions and ordinances, and I see a resolution for an interlocal agreement.
Yes, the first, the first resolution regards the Home Investment Partnership Program. A resolution of the City of Renton, Washington, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter the city of Renton into an interlocal agreement with King County entitled Home Investment Partnerships Program Interlocal Cooperative Agreement.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Taylor?
I move that this resolution be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved in second that the resolution be adopted as read. All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution passes with unanimous vote? Is there another resolution? Only show one?
No, just one, we have one ordinance for first...
Got an ordinance for first reading.
This regards the Latecomer Agreement Code Amendment. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending Section 4-1-180 of Chapter One, Administration and Enforcement of Title IV Development Regulations and Chapter Five Latecomer Agreements of Title IX, Public Ways and Property of the Renton Municipal Code, Updating Regulations and Adding Definitions Regarding Utility and Street Latecomer Agreements Pursuant to Engross Substitute House Bill 1717.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Pavoni?
I move that the ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting.
Second.
Mr. Prince seconded that one. Everybody came in at the same time. Sitting closer to me can hit me. It's been moved, to move the ordinance, approve the ordinance for first reading this evening. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. And now we're to new business. Marcy?
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Corbin?
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Taylor?
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Breyer?
No new business, Mr. Mayor. I have business. The Finance Committee will meet next Monday, June 23rd, from 5:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. We have six items, vouchers, emerging issues and revenue streams, local government investment pool update resolution, the Cedar River Gabion Repair Project Contract, fire and emergency services request to convert a fire lieutenant position, and Consortium Fiber Project Agreement 64. So, that should fill the hour. That's all I have.
Yes, for Mr. Mayor here, for council president in person, committee at all, from 6 o'clock to 7:00 on Monday, June 23rd, we'll be getting our diversity plan updated. That is all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, now we have audience comment.
Paul Olet, Renton, Royal Hills, I couldn't come over here without saying a few words. Anyway, I wanted to congratulate the council for bringing a presentation on the library again tonight. And I must say that Peter did a better job this time than last time, because I think part of the problem was miscommunication or incorrect information that was put out to the public, especially with respect to the wedge and the filling in of that wedge. It was not clear on the information that was put out in the Renton Reporter, and tonight, for instance, was shown a plan. I would propose that if a little plan like this was put out in the paper, that people would see it. They would see the entire layout of the new library. That would be a positive thing. And to me, it would be good for you guys to get, the public is with you now, okay? So, let's all work on it together. And so, the same way with, there was another thing, oh, on the library, the temporary location. You know, I lived in Renton for 40 years, but when it said 64 Rainier Avenue, I had to scratch my head, where is that? I think it's someplace near the overpass, the railway overpass. I'm not sure. Why not, why don't they put out a little map that shows this is where your new, your temporary library is going to be? Again, it's all part of the communications to the people, so that people were upset when they first saw that picture on the Renton Reporter, only because the wrong, the correct information was not put out. And so, it's not up to the Renton Reporter to go find something, it's up to the staff to submit to Renton Reporter to say, "This is what it's going to look like." So, thank you, Jay. That's all.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Taylor?
Yes, for those at home that don't know where 64 Rainier Avenue is, it is at the old Hollywood Video location at Rainier and Airport Way. So, that's the location where the library is going to be there.
Plenty of parking.
Yep. Plenty of parking and plenty of access.
That helps, Mr. Taylor. Thank you. That we can remember.
See, nobody else that wants to speak to council?
Move adjourned. Second.
It's been moved in second that we, that you're in. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Word.